Call immediately the order. Please stand and follow me in the pledge and the indication. Please place your hand over your heart and follow me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal, just as for all.
Please by your heads and moments of silence for the earthquake victims and chili and tsunami victims of Austin. A couple of calls about telling my friends in Newport careful of the tsunami. You know, like the fourth of the morning.
Oh, my daughter's sleeping this morning.
Yeah, lucky I got that.
I heard the waves were six inches bigger.
Okay. They've been big this last week. Okay, let's go to the world call.
Secretary Dan Sherman.
Present.
Assistant Secretary Arlen Shifa.
Here.
Secretary Robert Uten is on his way to the meeting. Vice President Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Shifler is here.
Any sort of minor matters, Tom?
Uh, no, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Any late communications?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, we did receive one from Mr. Moser. It was just some minor grammar corrections on the minutes. We responded back and thank you very much for the fetches and his suggestions.
Do we make those changes?
Um, no, I will make a change, yes.
Thank you. Public comments, senior public, we'll move on to next item consent calendar. I'll move the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
New discussion. As stands approved, that's right. We'll do the public hearings, new public hearings.
Yeah, new message.
General manager report, we're letting EEC, Environmental, GIS support service.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. As you know, we use EEC for our GIS, our geographical information system and our computer rights maintenance management system. The GIS is our mapping system. They took all the atlas, the hard copies, put it in a digital form for us. Again, the computer rights maintenance management system is our work orders, our electronic work orders. As you know, these systems are now available out in the field. But the field guys using the tablets, they, EEC has been our consultants for, on this side, on the GIS CMS for about six years now. And according to our, according to our code, we don't, we don't have contracts longer than five years except for a few other contracts like the trash services, like my contract or the truckers contract, engineer's contract. Those are some exceptions. However, this contract was followed that, that per year, that five years we have to go up the bid. Because of EEC's thorough knowledge of our system, because of our guys, our staff is thorough knowledge of their system, the GIS, the CMS, my recommendation is for you to avoid, or not avoid, but dismiss that requirement to extend it for another year and allow us to enter another, one more year with EEC, with the GIS and CMS.
You've had the same price?
The, the gave us a proposal, was in your staff, was in your staff report. The proposal cost for the support services would be thirty-nine thousand dollars. We have budget forty-five thousand dollars in the budget, so there's plenty of money in the budget for the services. You don't need to sign this, you know, I have, I have under the code authority to sign it here, but what I do need to prove from you is to go ahead and waive the bidding requirement and direct me to implement amendments to that contract.
Stand your motion?
Yes, yes.
Move for approval of amending the contract as presented by the general managers.
I'll second it. You don't, you don't think we're leaving any money on the table or, I mean...
It, it's...
I know we have a relationship with them and it would be a real hassle to converse with somebody else.
Yeah, the only thing is, it's such, it's such a technical side. I, you know, it could be kind of a challenge for me to draft a RFP. I'm not a GIS person. So it's kind of like, I think that's where the challenge is. And so I've been doing some research into what other, are other consultants out there that can do it? I mean, if you don't want it, then the alternative is to direct them to go up the bid. But it's just...
Well, we're happy with what they're doing.
Yes.
Or are we?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'll work with them extensively too.
Yeah, we, we're not just happy with them, we're even more than extremely happy with them. They're part of our fabric.
Okay.
And they, they're incredible. So we don't just use one or two people there, we use like six or seven here, there, and everywhere. And...
So next year, we would, we would though negotiate with them. Or put it out there.
Next year, you know, we'd probably, we'd go up the bid again or next year we might come back to see against it, like two more years.
How long would we tend to?
Uh, well, with, with this services, at least six years. They also implement our fog program, they've been there for a bit longer. We did go up the bid on that, on the fog, on the fog services, and they were on that contract. But this one's because it's so technical and I don't even know where to begin the right way. These kind of did.
Are they in the ballpark with their fees?
Yes.
Based on other commitments?
Uh, well, again, I, I have done some research on what other companies are paying. But again, this is within our budget, so that's why I'm recommending to continue for another year.
You're hardly comparing apples to oranges, you know, and everything's just different.
Right.
But our motion is just going with the...
You're waiving, your motion is waiving the bidding procedures and direct staff directs with your manager to enter an amendment with EEC.
Any other discussion?
I'd, I'd like to make one suggestion, that is, next year, if you really wanna not test the waters, but negotiate hard, we can do that. But I would rather negotiate hard than look for someone else.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we, we could get crushed if we went somewhere else.
Negotiate softly too, probably.
I, sure.
From me?
Yeah.
Um, since we just adopted it to your budget, if we negotiate, you know, following year for the next budget cycle, how would be appropriate? And because we've just added a bunch of services, with the mapping and stuff, we really haven't, you know, benefited from that. We're still on that learning curve and we haven't made it up to the top. Where we're, you know, where everything's working consistently, everything's knowledgeable. So, you know, a couple more years is actually, you know, with the software and the investment they made would not be, you know, when you get to ten years, then your software is obsolete and so you've got to go do something because you're so far behind, but now...
Are you saying that maybe next year we're looking for like a two-year extension instead of one? Or how about this year?
No, it's not. You could go up the bid, but if someone else came in and bid it, you know, it's not within our budget and so we would have to, you know, revisit it the whole.
And so within our power to do a two-year...
Yeah, you can, you can waive as, you know, of course, if you want to. If it's a contract that you can't, sure, if you're, if you're the policy in it.
I could amend what I, my motion...
If you'd like to make, you can make a motion that Jim agrees with. Well, I, I'm just, I think that's probably why, yeah. Is there some way to put a gap on what they can raise it in that one year? Or is it, this, this request is for one-year increase though?
Yeah.
That's the only gap.
Yeah, um, we, we can have that discussion with them. Like their, their fees have been pretty, pretty consistent.
They haven't really raised their fog, they never raised their fog program for all the years before.
They raised it a little bit. It, it's, but not, not significant where it had a potential impact.
Because you have it under your authority anyway for that amount. And ours discussion right now is just for moving it through a two-year extension.
Okay.
And then you can negotiate the cost. Because that's within your budget, you know, that's right.
If they're both in charge, we're pleased with them and working with them.
Sure, yeah, sure. So if you wanna waive it for, for the bidding procedure for two years, that's fine.
Right, so I'd like to strike for one year and go for two years.
We still have an hour, I mean, the contract is sure.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I have the general manager.
That's probably why.
So I'll start the talks anyway very early, because it's in the budget, so I will know on the path.
I'll amend my second. Do we have any more discussion? Any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Go down to the committee. Number twelve, sewer lateral assistance program.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This, you know, whenever our residents completed their SLAP process and they received payment, we mail them a postcard, a small postcard to get their feedback on the program. And so I just thought it'd be a good idea to show you that the results, the last couple of years, of what people are saying about the program. The results are coming back very positive. We are receiving, you know, thirty-five to thirty percent return ratio, which is not too bad. It's not bad. Like, most questions are asking it in favorable. The one, the lowest one, there was question three, is was, was it just able to professionally discuss your sewer lateral problems and assist you in making decisions? That receives eighty-four and eighty-three percent. But still, still good, good numbers. What I, what I found most interesting was the, the question was, how did you learn about the program? And you just see the overwhelming response that they heard it from their contractor and the plumber. So they're, they're clearly using it as a, as a marketing tool to solicit business. It'll be interesting, as you know, we are gonna be implementing the pilot program that you directed us to do, where we would just provide assistance for CCTVing the lines. We take two, three for that and the next suggestions. Our hope is that, that new pilot program will hopefully deter some of what we can, some of the plumbers that be taking advantage of some residents, you know, charging, charging them improvements that they didn't need. So we're hoping this will curb, curb that. So, but right now, we, we all got a lot of stuff in our place, haven't gotten to it, but...
What do you think that might give us?
Um, I think it's like the study session, that we would try and put together a preliminary plan for, maybe a study session in December, so that we could possibly go out the program in the beginning of the new year, so if we get six months or things. We probably need to look at the newsletter and do a training too, or to that. So maybe we need to kind of this first study session or this, and the other study session this is today, might be.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to sit down and think about it, but, yeah, it's on our, it's on our due list.
Any other comments?
Well, as long as you do this, I didn't quite understand it, even though I was here.
Uh, do this, it, it's to implement the pilot SLAP program, the pilot program when that was, we were considering changing the program where we would fund just CCTVing the laterals and we would require them to, obviously, we see the lot, and we would make those recommendations for, for the homeowners on what needs to be done, rather than, you know, that's, we're hoping that would deter some of the improvements, or some of the improvements that these plumbers are doing that weren't necessary. And so now, now residents are getting spent for like eight thousand, ten thousand dollars still, which they didn't need to do.
Any other comments? Will you still see the file?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Move down to thirteen, organics recycling program. Last week.
That would be Secretary Uten.
I'm writing my note. Um, I think, well, we had an organic meeting, implementation meeting on the ninth. And the CRNR attendees and staff had an agenda. What we received during the meeting was the trash tendies that they had, had to date. I didn't bring the newspapers, but you get a glimpse of it if you look at the, the bill, what you pay, paid on the consent calendar. The twenty-eight days of trash collection and there's about seven, seven tons a day. Yeah, that, that, that's interesting. You're, you're in the town hall.
That's for you, that's for you, that slide. I think it was put off, you requested it as information.
Yeah, that's, that's good information. So what, what they did was, they, they were averaging about, so they billed us in August for seven tons a day on average. And that bill is, you know, I think it came in June for ten thousand dollars for it. That's a nine point seven nine rate. And then, and once too much worse, that, the August bill though doesn't cover us like quite the quantity that they, they're holding on to get because there's still food for the carts to be delivered, including my neighborhood, which is, you know, the, um... So the, oh, and then we talked about the organic contamination. And I'd made a trip up to see the, see a load dump, happened to be on my neighborhood's trash day. And there wasn't too much contamination, it was eating white eggs and black eggs, and too much, too much. Didn't I make the report at the study session?
No, it was after the study session, that's why we're doing it today.
Okay. Because this is not certain, you know. So, anyway, I went up to see the trash and Matt and I, Mike Chaper, or that Mike Chaper, a couple of calls from residents wondering if, you know, why in the hell is it picking up the trash?
No, that was the...
In the evening, and it was because they had taken a truck off route, taken it up to the dirty merb, which is one recycle drive off, drive off. And roads are not very farm at all, beachable, but... So I get up there and, you know, they dumped it and we looked at it and I got to talk to the truck driver and he said, "The contamination is substantially worse in the multifamily homes." And then the reason they can tell that is because the drivers have a mirror and they can see what is being dumped. So when they see white eggs, I mean, I was, um, there's greenbells, you know, that is, and they even believe that, that's probably trash that somebody could eat. I've been going through some of the alleys and, um, the multifamily homes, much more routinely put, using as regular trash cans than, than the, so the residents is, so I go along in the morning and open them.
I was just gonna ask, do you open and open the trash?
Absolutely. I let the flies in or let them out.
Okay.
Um, the other big issue that, that at least residents is, you know, I'm talking about is the compostable bag. They're not readily available locally. And so I, I asked staff to check if the recyclable places that we said that they should be. And, and they are at, they are at Sprouts, which is a ten-gallon bags rather than the small bags that we would be using in the past. So, you know, that's mostly what we talked about. And then, you know, they, we knew that they were, we would get more cart data at the next event.
No question. When they, when we went to the dirty merb with the organics, do they sort through that also?
Yes, they, they didn't that, they did a step on the floor, tried to see it. And the non, non, well, they were just, couldn't believe it was all being dumped. So the trash truck go up a ramp and there's a, you know, a reporting system, and I didn't look at the reporting system. And, you know, an interesting question for, right now, in the, in the towns that have the trash can system, the recyclable can goes to the cleanber. So that's easier stuff to then sort, and the most productive stuff is probably then to see.
I'm concerned with the thing about the animal droppings in our middle, and you catch your dog for a walk and you send the plastic and you just dump it into the organic form.
It's, it's probably, it's okay, I think it's okay if it's in a compostable bag, because the animal droppings would make, you know, good food for animals, but it's not in a compostable bag that I want. So you can dump the bag, you know, take the bag and dump the animal, put it in the, in the bins. That's good for their organic program.
What about the plastic that the newspapers come in, and use that as a...
It's not a compostable bag. It has to be labeled, has to be labeled.
So where they do.
If the, if the bag was labeled compostable, not biodegradable.
Smart files got them. They're, they're not the right size, but it works, you can make it work. And it was, it was like eighteen bucks for five hundred of...
Really?
So are they the ten-gallon ones or the bigger ones?
No, they're, they're, they're like this tall, that wide.
Okay. Although, although more nearly what we want, yeah. But, you know, people are having trouble finding them.
It took me a while to find it over there. Is smart file on our website? There's one right down the street.
You know, I mean, on our website.
Well, it's on our website, you know, I better check. That'd be good.
Any other questions? Let's see. Anyway, the driver said the single-family residences are doing better than multifamily. And when I walked the alleys, you know, I walk a lot in the mornings, some of them, some of the multifamilies that have organic carts aren't even out. And if they are, it, it seems to be improving that the gardeners are using it.
How many trucks do that involve in this, against customer difficulties?
Right now, two.
So they, they, they go unload, they pick up the organics, take it back, and how many trips do they run?
I don't know if they even have to make one, but, uh, you see, they pick up six tons a day and I don't know how many, but I don't know how much they cost.
But eventually, it'll be a lot more.
I think it's, I think they just make two routes from the end of the hunt.
Isn't it one of the, in that study session, where we're talking about getting forward transition?
Yeah.
In terms of time, timeline.
It'll help CRNR a lot.
Well, help us do it complex, you know, less long than...
I don't know if they're able to get through the midlings any faster, but if they did today...
Well, because I didn't know if we have to make more than one trip, is my point. If they just have to make one trip.
I'm actually just hoping if they don't.
That's what, that's one of the questions we've been asking.
But I see CRNR trucks, you know, get it up there. But I don't know if it's coming from out there. Not for you.
Any other questions to borrow?
No, I apologize for being late. For some reason, when we changed this meeting, I sort of kicked the block on my, in my, in my plan.
I guess I'll apologize for being late too. I was stuck with a real spring controversy in the back of my head. We look like we've been to a boxing match. It's a surfing accident, ended up on the rocks. Go Hiti.
Really?
Yeah. I took a little trip to the emergency room courtesy of the paramedics and put it in the straight.
Was that that big surf?
Neck brace.
The big surf?
Yeah, I'd like to blame it on the big surf. It wasn't that big.
See, blood in the ocean, you know, you're the plant, you're the...
Yeah, it was blood in the ocean.
Sharks are there.
The sharks rejected you, professional courtesy.
I'm gonna call him the kahuna.
Well, we've got a lot of things to talk to CRNR about. You know, the reason, the reason I asked Scott to give me this was, um, because I'm still confused about, you know, what to correct the payment, is CRNR or...
I feel again, Scott, if you're gonna get together before this next study session, you have it all discussed afterwards.
I think, you know, I think they should get together, but I'm with CRNR, and I'm new at the beginning.
Well, hopefully always happen, in some way. Okay, let's move down to fourteen, contribution program, coastal mason public safety recognition barbecue.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This was recommended by the board that places item on the agenda. The coastal mason public safety recognition barbecue is approaching us, it's on October first. And you can be a sponsor, contribute to the, to this event. The contribution ranges from fifty dollars to one thousand dollars. And in your staff report describes what you get for, for those contributions. So what, just, just a reminder tonight that when, or if you're considering contributions, that you need to ask yourself the two questions that we wrote, that we had here on, on the staff report. And that is, you need to ask yourself, how will the district contribution benefit and serve the purpose of the district? Remember that, that purpose must be one of the district's statutory powers, trash, recycling, and wastewater collection. And you need to ask yourself, how will, will a contributor advance its purpose? So, so when you make that, if you're gonna make that contribution, you need to ask those questions and ensure that, that you can answer them appropriately. So just, what's your pleasure?
Welcome to further discussion or comments.
Well, public relation line, I think it's great because we work with the police, we work with the fire, and, you know, this is actually their event, their, the city is honoring them. And so, you know, we, we, we do our, um, the needles with the fire department and, you know, some, you know, any kind of needle and thing with the police or the newsroom.
Uh-huh, so we have to back those two questions.
Mm-hmm, that's what I'm talking about, and of course, you know, that's...
You should really put backs before you and vote on those facts to establish a record and take the judge who ever challenged your decision and said, what you had is okay.
That's the question before us, you know, do you have, what's the sense of privacy? Or I won't bore you with it. Because I, I thought it was, you know, tough to make a decision to agree to this because they're not really offering anything, especially for the money that could be spent.
And if all we would get is recognition on the district.
Right, and we're with the Chamber of Commerce and they're putting it on.
But they're not, all the divisions that we have, you know.
Generally, in these events, we have a booth as a minimum, I think. I don't believe they offer that.
They don't seem to have that.
Or that they would allow us to advance a message or something, some, an advertisement to promote recycling or something that advances our, 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 our project.
Yeah, in the past, we've done, um, I think, canvas bags and put a lot of things in it and just gave it to them. And it's the first time I've seen something like this for, you know, for fifty or hundreds or whatever.
We, we, we could possibly do that. And we'd be conscious of maybe keeping it in the sense that it's good for the public. And generally, that would, like, we wouldn't have to take it.
And I don't know if we have enough, I think we're out of stats. And I think we're out of...
Yeah, I usually, especially when that's probably bad, but, well, um...
When is it, October the first?
October first, it's the first Thursday. We have to make up a mine now. Another thing we have to ask ourselves, if you were doing something like this, and you're giving one gift or two gifts or two, really the components of it. I can't tell because I have a contract for another event that I'm in charge of.
We should, we should someone turn that day.
I always go and I, I always...
I usually go.
That's when I always...
I've gone before.
Okay, yeah.
What day of the week is March?
Thursday.
Because I would, I wouldn't mind making a contribution on my own, my job, I see. And if the five of us, it might, you know, if we had the hundred dollar one, we still owe twenty bucks. And I'll have a little bit. Recognition and regulation, two gifts. That would be my suggestion, at this, at this point.
You could just pray around with a paper on your foot.
I mean, I don't think it's justified, given any amounts of money, because of those server functions.
With the firing, please?
I mean, with the way they have it outlined for us, you know, if it's an option, if you really want to, if they have some different options, you know, for payment sponsors, I think that would be different. That's just me speaking.
I agree. Personally, I think it's, we're far, far into a trip considered on our own, because it's not on an annual level in my picture.
I agree with what you're saying. I'll make, try to make a motion to, well, or just, you know...
Let it die.
But, I mean, we can independently, if we wanna get together, I think that's, you know, donation of, maybe doctor, the paper, of course, now to give me whatever amount of money we need to provide to her.
I could, I could back in my research.
You not to deal with, you not to deal with them?
No, I have to...
I don't know.
It's a, it's a fun event, and then last year, last year the day that, you know, the vice story doctor, she was the only one. Yeah.
They had the cheerleaders and the song, and all kinds of...
What time does it start this week?
I think eleven.
Eleven at one.
First of lunch and ice cream and, it's made in my area.
Well, just put that, you know, I, and I work it out, and maybe the dedication, and you can send it in for four, three or two. But that's not good. And then, when, if you talk to the, the people that rent us, maybe you offer, offer something different.
Yeah, we use this tall pattern, this, this dollar that we're just going to do a hundred dollars from individually. Yeah, we use this tall pattern, it's just a, that we're just going to do a hundred dollars from individually, you know.
I'm in total.
Thank you, let's move on to our engineers report, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and Board members. I'm pleased to answer any questions. Scott may want to give you an update on our favorite utility, the gas company.
Rob, uh, Project Two Thousand and Four is complete, um, and still in the works.
Wendy's my, Wendy's in-
Wendy probably.
Oh, Wendy up at the chimney?
Yeah, you know, I didn't get to talk to her. You know, um, until we've received all the bills, um-
But it's still an active project.
Yeah, I don't usually take it off until we've got all the, the bills done.
I just get complete on that.
Yeah, you're right, I can, I can take it off. And I will, as soon as we bring the, um, C I P, next meeting, we should have the balances dropped over. And so I'll remove all the old ones, so that's my best.
I was refer, excuse me, I was referring to the fact that the gas company, after Scott went to the mat and talked from the top down, they did get out there and they installed the wrong size regulator. And then they went and made up a story that we submitted three applications. One of them had the right information and two of them didn't. We submitted one application, it was in my handwriting, and it had the correct information. And some clerk over there typed up an application based on arsenetal. And they claimed we submitted those, so they just, they just can't get enough of doing things the wrong way.
Do they recognize?
They're in the process of it, so we're, we're almost there, but that's the latest holding.
Any other questions for Rob? Thank you. For the Treasury report, number sixteen.
Thanks, Mr. Vice President and Board members. This item is a resolution authorizing your investment in Cal Trust. Uh, just by way of background, you did adopt the same, a similar resolution back in two thousand eight. Uh, we did, we chose not to open the account at that time, it just, it just didn't fit with what we were investing in. Uh, based upon the, uh, special meeting we had last month, talking about investments, uh, we decided we would revisit this issue. The language and sample resolution from Cal Trust has changed pretty significantly since two thousand eight. So we thought it'd be a good idea to re-present this item back to you again for your consideration of adoption. Uh, this time, well, once it is adopted, then we would go ahead and, uh, this authorizes myself to open up the account. And we would go ahead and make a deposit with Cal Trust.
Maybe you have chances to look at all the changes that could make.
Uh, yes, I reviewed all, I, I gave you everything about, uh, that. You, all you would be doing is just, uh, approving the re- resolution, authorizing you to, um, be a participant and not a member of the, of Cal Trust, just to invest as a participant. And yes, I have gone through all of those documents. All those documents have been submitted to, um, a district council as, as well for his review.
Well, when I was up at, uh, the last season of the C S D A, I talked to them about, um, how they're doing for the Cal Trust. I'm Cal Trust, huh, Cal Trust. And, uh, they were saying that, um, special districts are really entering into that. I mean, it feels better than right, right now. They're, they're, they're there, and, uh, they've got about thirty-one different districts involved. And so it's only about the positives, because yeah, go ahead, do it then.
Are you planning to make extra gross transactions with that, any of that?
Yes, if you authorize it, then we would go ahead and submit the, uh, the account application to them to open the account. And we would start with the, the minimum deposit of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is our drive period, and so there's not a lot of extra cash to be able to invest. Once we get into the November timeframe, though, we evaluate on, on putting additional funds there. We would put it with, uh, with the three accounts that they have, the, um, short-term, medium-term, long-term. And the long-term really doesn't exist yet. It, it exists in name only, but there's no program for it. Uh, we would invest in the medium-term, which allows us to make one deposit or one withdrawal a month.
Good question. So we need approval for the rest of the-
Amber Resolution Number Twenty Fifteen Eight Seventy-Five?
I'll step in.
In the concession, in the opposition? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. And then, uh, next one.
Thanks, Mr. Vice President and Board members. Uh, this item is a, uh, cleanup agreement for District Treasurer Services. Uh, as, uh, you're aware, in June, C B I sold its governmental practice in Irvine to Davis Far. And, um, uh, so now this agreement is, uh, for Treasuries, Treasurer Services would be with Davis Far going forward, effective on the date of that transaction, which was June first, two thousand fifteen. The agreement that is attached to this, um, has been submitted to, uh, District Council for review. And, and Alan and I have shared some emails on some changes that we're probably gonna make to recitals and, uh, addition of a, a bond requirement, um, than what's presented here. So if you choose to approve the agreement, we ask that you approve it, subject to Alan's final approval as to the agreement.
Mr. President, and also, Mark is acting in his personal capacity today, and he's not making a recommendation as city treasurer because of the confidentiality laws. I believe your general manager's recommending this.
Yes, I, it's, uh, probably also, my, I'm not sure if I do it on general manager's report, so that's my fault. Um, but yeah, I'd recommend, I do, you know.
That move is subject to President's approval.
Just a second, any discussion in the opposition, so the motion passes. Move down here to the Treasury report.
I have nothing tonight, you see.
Local meetings, for example, Sandusky.
It's next week, in fact, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna miss it. Because we get in at six.
No, we leave it, yeah, we leave it six, get it like that.
Yeah. You're gonna have to get shit for me, buddy.
Yeah. I'll be there in spirit.
Okay, down here to SARSA, SARSA meetings next week also. We'll be, July will be, but that's on Thursday. We won't go over the report, so I'll just call them.
Right, I'm standing, standing with this, I think the operations committee, there's a lot of small projects, uh, engine cooling, they have one of those separate windows, and crank shafts have to be repaired. They discovered that, but they're just assembling it. Those things run twenty-four hours a day, seventy weeks, year after year after year. Then there were a couple of small projects, and, and a lot of committee reports. And then, um, um, the administrative committee has recommended to us, which is normal, but, but they had an agenda, I didn't, to put their fees on the on-site tax. And then they're also working with the, well, Vigenians on the medical, we don't know which, which is, you know, still costs. And they're trying to leave the matters, but, um, maybe we discuss, it's all members.
You do a different fee on the tax.
Yeah, it's same, well, I think it's the same process we use, um-
You're already on there, okay.
Well, but for some reason, there was a, uh, there was an item on there, you know, Warren's had an item on there. Maybe have the board approve it.
Is it additional, I don't know, how they work their fee?
Yeah, I, I, man, may not have, maybe, I heard it correctly, but-
Probably did. Okay, so down here to, uh, eight, nine?
Hmm, yeah, for that.
Independent special districts, personship is gone, are they, do you attend others, or?
Um, yes, I do, absolutely, it was on the panel.
Just to agenda, right, to agenda.
Yeah, it's just the agenda, we're doing, we're doing, I think, out there.
So down here to C S D A.
Okay, um, C S D A, as I know of, the C S D A conference coming up, and we're starting over. And, um, the, um, legislation people are all really, seem like they're looking at us and, uh, changing different laws and things that, uh, were coming out. And we're asking that we can accept, and if they consider special districts, they're known different things. So, um, the legislation we've gone to, you know, drugs are, they're now over. Except for, I guess, uh, another, this, 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 but, but again, unless we can do it. And, um, since they've already asked, where do you want to, uh, work next year? So, I'm heading for legislation committee and also membership, but I don't know if I'll get it. I mean, those are hard to get, and so we'll see. I was at this year, and so that was rolling. Um, as far as, uh, the events up at C S D A, there's all kinds of, you know, good speakers, good events. And I'm sure that, uh, next year, when we have it again, or next time we have it, that we'll be speaking on organics and stuff, you know.
And they're gonna check you, though.
Yeah, because by then, we'll be, you know, have, we'll be experienced. And we'll be able to, uh, you know, give them a good message, because a lot of them are so interested in what's going on and what's happening. And, uh, we're right now getting new members at C S D A, the ones that, um, on the board, that didn't have people, they, they voted on that. And, um, then of course, at Tuesday morning meeting, is when the board, the board consists of eighteen people on the board, and that's when they vote on the executive board. So, and of course, I thank you for allowing me to run. And, uh, I don't know if I'll get it or not, because I don't-
Tuesday night, the C S D A conference?
Yeah, uh, the general manager, who, um, is running, and, um, but, you know, he wrote me a letter and asked me to, uh, wait a year, and he'd be so happy to back me up. And, you know, what a good leader I am, and he didn't know I was, you know, and I was. So I wrote him a letter and said, you know, thank you so much, I really appreciate that. And I feel the same way, if you wait, I'll back you up. So I've never gotten your names to come up.
Is that the real picture, you send some mail or book or?
I wish we could have ours coming along, I get it, but unfortunately, uh, you have to have probably eight or nine votes because there's eighteen people on the board. So I've already been on my politicking, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, if I make any, if I don't, you know, if I try, right?
Is that meeting before the other meetings, sir?
Um, it's actually Tuesday, so in other words, you guys come in on a Monday, Monday, Monday's report, the speech, the speech, and then you get appointed nights. And then Tuesday morning, before we even get downstairs, we've got the, the meeting of the board, and that's when we go.
That's in your schedule?
Well, we haven't dropped it probably yet, huh?
Yeah, so-
You don't know about that, so I'm probably-
Sure, so I know when I, so that's it.
Okay. Especially this, this man, so, other meetings qualified for revisiting.
Oh, you're, oh, I was just gonna mention, have we recorded on our meeting with Jim Hilbert?
Um, I got, I've, you know, we, we-
We had a meeting in regards to, uh, the, uh, you know, the West Side abandonment. And, uh, we, I, I kinda personally, I went in kind of apprehensive thinking that, that they were gonna kind of pull a plug on it, but it wasn't that way at all. Uh, they really didn't seem to be listening to the environmentalists specifically. But, but more attuned to the Fair, uh, Fairview, uh, you know, the volume of, of water going through the Fairview trunk line. And it's, and, you know, if, if that's on the increase, then that's, they, they may not go forward with it. But it, chances are, it would seem to me that it was probably going the other way. So, they're, they're still behind us, and, uh, I think it was a positive meeting. Bob?
Yeah. The, the long month in study of design, uh, by the consultant, now Thanksgiving. So, sometime ahead of that, they'll have draft report, maybe they could really get some ideas. I know the flow is going, and, and Fairview trunk, um, you know, you can, and, uh, if that is less of an issue than it was in the past, you know, they'll, you know, they'll talk to the board and, um, there's, there's always a chance, you know, that the, the board may not, um, may not support the project.
Well, they supported it the first time I went.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I-
So they, they, I expect that'll come in December, January, by time the staff has a chance to analyze the report.
Would the environmentalists factor in a lot, like, do you have worried about?
Well, I think, I think they are the ones that, uh, at least asked the question, and, uh, enough times, you know, it's what they thought it was important to have that, that, uh, issue clear in their mind.
The company that they had hired to do the review of the trunk line, didn't really do an adequate job.
They didn't, they didn't-
And that's, that, and that was brought up because the, the environmentalists were kind of questioning it. So that kind of got uncovered. And, and then, uh, so now they're making another run at it, and, uh, uh, you know, so we'll get the, the real information.
Yeah, so that is kind of what you can't, you can't- It's actually the same consultant, so potentially they can figure it and model out, and what the test is, you know.
You're, so you're saying, oh, the lower flow is better for us?
Yeah.
Well, they, they wouldn't have to, uh, you know, have any reason to, to, you know, upgrade it or, you know.
And-
Is that right, wrong?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, basically, the consultant did not study whether, their, the environmentalist question was, if you do the West Side abandonment project, are you still gonna have to, might you still have to upsize the Fairview trunk? And that they didn't study well enough. So they want that question answered. So, that's the question that's being answered. And it's a delay. Every day is another, it's a one-to-one delay, meaning every day we delay, it's still four years out from the day they would ever say yes. Meaning, uh, two, basically, two years in design and two years in construction. So, the project has, just experienced a one-year delay, basically. So, they won't receive the report till Nov- November, Thanksgiving. Then they have to decide whether, what to do about it. So, as the directors have mentioned, it could go either way.
There is, you're using an abundance of caution.
Right.
There is, covering their thing.
Well, Wendy, um, you know, the assumptions you made in the budget this year now are incorrect.
I don't.
Hey, had a girl.
Yeah, we, we don't have to-
We're loaded.
We don't have to increase the, I, I forget whether we chose to increase the, you know, we put aside for the six compensation event and then we're not, but we were at least analyzing.
We did, we usually talk to the district for the amount of like this year, I think it's a little over one hundred. That we put four staff, um, to get the loan company to use, like, projects, so.
We got now another year at least.
But, um, you know, costs could be higher by the time we actually get there, and, um-
Well, it couldn't be like the true budget.
Well, and we, we've got all the projects taking a handle right now, so, um, I still think we're on a, a part of it. Maybe you can always, really, I think, you know.
And we will probably have enough saved, if there's, if for any reason, I understand, Sandusky backed up the project. Uh, he's got a couple of thousand dollars involved there. And that can go towards the re- the repairs as they are needed in those constations and portments.
O C S D has eight hundred thousand dollars invested in it.
They're not gonna do that.
No.
There's another means.
Um, well, we have the regional water quality control board meeting tomorrow. Uh, have you briefed the board on that?
They'll be up there tomorrow.
So basically, the only, you can, I may go, Scott may go, but it's on the regional water quality control board. It was on the agenda. They may pull it, so, because, um, and whatever the agreement is called, so. Uh, we did not have a, um, a, a set put in the agreement. And, and they said, perhaps we- and, and they said, perhaps, so what happened was the general, the C T G, or whatever they call it, uh, the region board saw that, saw the article in the paperwork, where we intended to do a project, and he, so he and Scott have been talking, and, um, they're likely to pull the project tomorrow, at least the decision on what to find would be, so that they can go back and rewrite whatever the cost appears, you know, to allow us to do this.
Well, don't we have to wait for our, us to say, you know, yeah, yeah?
No, no.
No, it should have been in the, it should have been in whatever they're presenting tomorrow, so they'll have to wait.
Sure, but I was thinking that they continue it, being that we're delaying everything, giving it, when we get together, I don't.
Yeah, I think we haven't agreed to anything, so we just, if that precludes us from doing a certain deal, and we ask them to continue it, so we could have that other option too. We haven't made any decisions.
Well, months from now, if they meet, then the thirty-day clock that we thought we were gonna be on, there goes tomorrow, starts running. So we really have a sixty-day window, but I think it's probably fifteen days until the process.
So nobody's gonna go to one.
How long should it take to have our SEC going?
Well, I, I mean, I wanna wait, what you wanna do first, you know, I mean, I was working on some proposals, and we're gonna have another meeting, so, so, some, some, uh.
No, but don't we have to present that first before they make the decision, is what I'm saying?
No, what, what, what the, Dick enough is gonna say, he's gonna, he's gonna ask the, the board's delay decision, authorize him to, to, uh, work with us on, on that SEP application, so, um.
And whoever gets the SEP, whatever project it is, they'll run the thing through the paperwork.
Yeah, that's, that's what I hope to do, yeah, I don't, I, you know, I don't want.
We, we don't know, you know, we're not.
And I, you know, I, um.
But Scott's gonna contest, whether it's C T G or whatever.
So is, is our plan to go with the, start with both? Yeah, with the direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, um, um, yeah, they're, they're all for it. You know, the one reason why, and also, I don't know what they, the amount is gonna be, you know, for the application, well, how much is it gonna be? Well, I don't know if his, this step has, or the, uh, H C L has been approved yet.
But we, I, I think we can make, put it this way.
Well, that's a catch twenty-two then. If he can't do the SEP until he knows the H C L amount, then they're not gonna pound the gavel until they know the SEP, and you don't have an answer.
Yeah, you better get that clear now. But, but if, I, I guess, you know, depending on what the board wants to do with this, um, um, this latest offer or this decision, you know, if you're gonna accept it or not, if you're not gonna accept it, you know, if we're talking about now, but, um, it just really depends on what you wanna do, um, that I think is gonna drive, uh, the SEP process. So when, when Alan comes back in a couple of weeks with, um, the options, um.
Well, and the cost, and, and there's the whole, the whole thing, and that's gonna have something to do with it.
But the thirty, or any window, for, for us to make that decision, doesn't start until the board puts this offer on the table.
Director.
They may approve their order.
Right.
They haven't done that yet.
But, but we have to tell them what the SEP is.
Is gonna be first.
Right, before they can approve the order. We, we told them, wait, wait on the order.
They don't know what they're doing, do they?
They never done it.
They've not done it too many times.
We're the first.
Rob?
Director Uden, where did you find that information out? From the staff report?
From your general manager.
Oh, so, no, about them not adopting it tomorrow?
Oh, well, I think, I think the, I think that they have to pull it in order for us to put the SEP language into the order.
All right, so you, you weren't told that, you just think that?
I, I, Scott told me that.
Oh, okay.
Scott spoke with the executive director.
Okay.
The executive director called us and said, you know, you don't, you don't have, we don't have the paperwork.
I see, okay, I didn't hear that part, thank you.
Is it our advantage, like, wait as long as possible?
Absolutely.
That will hold our money longer.
So that gives you what, a given time period again?
I have no idea.
This way, so.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, well, I'll go to the meeting tomorrow, I'll see what decision they make, and I'll, I'll reach out to their ex-own, and, and this next step.
Any other meetings? Okay, let's move down here to old business, old business. Move down here to new business, new business.
Only, only, you, we were talking earlier in the meeting about, um, the organic. Is, is that gonna be on the next study session, the, um, session to cut in through, my understanding of the program?
No, I have my, I, I have the notes, uh, I'm gonna go back to the, the agenda, as you're calling it, as it is right now, um, but, um, uh, I'll look at my, um, I have my notes, so. It's not on the October, it'll definitely be in the November one, or, or I could put it on October board meetings, on the October, October board meetings.
Yeah, I think, um, there, there's a lot of details, you know, financial details still hanging at stake, in, in my mind. So the sooner the better, you know, I'm not sure what else is, is, is knows out, anything as important as the organic.
Well, we have the, we have the behavioral studies, that Sally's been doing a presentation on that, um, that's gonna be interesting, if I don't result, huh? That's gonna help us, hopefully help us, it'll help us, um, improve participation in the thing I'm doing. So, um, there's that, uh, I think the, uh, S S N T audit is gonna be on there too, so that's another presentation for you, um, from the consultant. I think, uh, but it's, it's pretty busy, but, uh, if you're, if you're okay having, we are, we are meet, you know, a long meet, it'll be a long meet.
I don't know why it'd be three hours, I mean, uh, with, with some focused thinking, none of those things should take more than half an hour.
Is Dean's presentation on the, on such a, about transfer station?
Uh, I don't think so, I think one thing he, he has, I don't, he, he wants to talk to you about, um, paying the truck, what they'll look like. Uh, due to things, you know, have that discussion that's on the agenda, um, but I don't, I can't, I don't know, I didn't know it was, it was four, it was like, a good, you know, ten, twelve lines on there already.
We had asked him to be prepared for that, but if you wanna go like that, that's okay.
He acted like he didn't have to. He said, I, I have room for that, there's no problem.
I don't, I mean, that's part of our contract, that we have to discuss it, because it affects costs and something we, we really didn't know about.
Yeah, and I have it looks like that, I want Dean to talk about that.
You can, you have to.
Yeah, I like to talk to him.
That's not a department, but later.
Okay.
You guys agree? Our communications, we're directed comments. Okay, same, and move to our chairman.